I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. I'm seeing no one else recording this meeting. If you'd please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have some special recognitions this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm very excited to share with everyone our two newest administrators to join the Auburn leadership team. So I'll just ask them to come up to the podium just to be recognized. We have Mr. Greg Desto. He is going to be the new principal of Auburn Middle School. I know I shared this with you a while back. Mr. Desto is currently the superintendent of schools in Dudley Charlton. Previously was the principal of Dudley Middle School for numerous years. And I thank again the committee that was involved in his hiring. It was an extremely thorough process and we are confident that we hired the absolute best candidate. The next one is Mrs. Marie Mahan. She is the new assistant principal at the Swanson Road Intermediate School. Marie most recently has served as the math coach in the district and has had a long and very stellar career in the Auburn Public Schools. So I just wanted them both to be recognized. Maybe if you come to the podium? Both of you, sure.
We'll be forever joined.
Yeah, exactly. Just to officially welcome you.
You've been moving this down for me.
So welcome aboard, Greg and Marie.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's great to have you. Any comments from the committee before Greg does a speech for us?
No speeches.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm really excited to have you guys here. And if there's any way that we can support you, please feel free to reach out to any of us. I think we're a pretty accessible group. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I just want to say that I was on the committee for hiring Mr. Desto and I enjoyed the process. And I have to say that we were pretty excited at the end of that process. It was excellent and we were pretty excited from the time that we made that choice. So I'm sorry that I was not on the committee to hire you, but I've heard such wonderful things. And we look forward to working hand in hand with each of you. And as Ms. Kaufman said, if there's ever anything that we can do to help out in any way, don't hesitate to reach out to us.
Thank you very much.
Welcome aboard. Dr. Brunello, do you have anything else?
Just want to thank, as I said to Mr. Desto, we always, when we hire an administrator, bring on a team of administrators, teachers, parents, and staff representatives. And it really has resulted in top-quality hires. As you know, we have a great leadership team in place and they're going to be wonderful compliments to it. So welcome aboard officially.
I think it's going to be a great thing.
Thank you so much.
Was there anything that you wanted to share with us?
Well, I just wondered who's coming from the outside. And you know, I've been in Dudley Charlton for 18 years and before that, teacher in Worcester. So I just want to say thank you for taking a shot at me. You know, I know that I was a non-traditional sort of candidate and I came in and we spoke and it was a great... I enjoyed the morning. Went home and kind of told my wife, you know, it either went well or they're going to think I'm from Mars. I'm not sure which. I'm glad to hear that you felt it went well and that I would be a good choice. And I'm very grateful to you, Dr. Brunello, and to your search committee for, you know, taking a chance on me. And I'm really looking forward to getting back in the principal game. I truly enjoyed that part of my career. So I think I have one more good run in me.
Good to know.
That's great.
Thank you very much for those sentiments and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. Started my career here in Auburn as a long-term sub and here I am now. I love Auburn and I just can't wait to get going. I'm really excited and I just appreciate the opportunity.
Excellent. Well, if you wouldn't mind just coming this way, shaking hands with us-
You bet.
-so we can congratulate you and then you can be on your way if you'd like.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard. Thank you.
I know where we can still pick blueberries. Hi Greg. Nice to see you.
You're welcome. You did fantastic.
Oh, thank you so much.
Ever since I got this position, I've heard so many, "Auburn's awesome." You guys are doing something right. My father says, "Try not to mess it up."
We'll try not to. Nothing exciting is going to happen from here on out. So if you'd like to take off for the night.
Have a great day.
Thank you. You as well.
Have a good summer too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no citizens to comment and no student representatives, I would seek approval of the minutes of June 6th.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of June 6th.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. We now move on to the superintendent's memo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in your packets, as we do annually, the principals went through the handbooks making updates to them. Most notably, it's really about changing the dates, making sure that names and staffing are listed as they should be. And what will be included is also, assuming you approve it tonight, is the homework guidelines, updated documents. So it is my recommendation that you approve these handbook changes, as noted.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the updates to each school's handbook for the 2018-2019 school year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
The next item, the school building committee, although our work is nearly done, once the audit is completed on the Auburn Middle School project, we will need to come together in the fall for at least one more meeting. So the terms of Mr. Paul Maroney and Mr. Renee Gibbrey, who have served since I have been in this capacity, they are set to expire. Both have indicated their desire to continue. So it is my recommendation that you reappoint them both.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to vote to reappoint Mr. Paul Maroney and Mr. Renee Gibbrey to the school building committee for a three-year term to expire on June 30th, 2021.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? I'd just like to thank them for their service up to date.
Absolutely.
Again, it's just giving back to the town. It's giving back to the schools and it's great. And a couple of really knowledgeable guys there. So it's great to have them onboard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
As we do regularly, I just wanted to make you aware we continue to watch the enrollment. I continue to be satisfied as other principals with them. Should anything change, I'll be back in touch with you at an upcoming meeting. In terms of the innovation school status, you may recall that several years ago, this was an opportunity that came out of the Department of Ed and really was to try and build some autonomies in schools. And Auburn Middle School applied for and received the STEM Academy grant. And actually Governor DeVal Patrick at the time came out and made a visit to Auburn Middle School, which is now Swanson Road. The money that came from DESI has long since dried up on this. We continue with all of the same activities. Following that, we had Auburn High School apply for and receive a freshman academy innovation school. We continue with that concept there. But again, there are no funds that come from DESI. What we're finding is, at the end of each year, we're completing an awful lot of paperwork to DESI that we're getting no money for. So in speaking with them, while it is our intention to continue with the STEM work and the freshman academy, with your approval, we'd like to eliminate the innovation status, continue with this. And what that will do is, the good work will continue. We just will need to... We won't need anyone to submit lots of paperwork to the Department of Ed.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion to approve of the removal of DESI-designated innovation school status at Auburn Middle School and Auburn High School.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Through the chair, I actually just have a question. So if I understand correctly, we're really just kind of losing the title only and everything.
Correct. So through the chair, that's exactly right. We will lose the title of innovation school. The STEM Academy work and the freshman academy work will continue in the schools. We're funding it with global dollars anyway. Nothing comes from the Department of Ed. So we really just eliminate the need to report to them.
So why give the state credit? It's our program. We pay for it.
And wouldn't we have to report to them as well?
We would. We would need to do all that reporting, yes.
Good.
Do you know if other districts are dropping the label?
I know that some over the years have. I don't know if there are any this year. We have a great contact there, Shay. She was very understanding and said, "I can appreciate that. There's not money coming." So... And I, you know, assured her that the work around this certainly is going to continue. So that's really the priority.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
Just wanted to give you a quick update. The start time team that I've been working on with a number of representatives from across the schools and community, we surveyed parents, students, and staff. And we received survey data back from 2,000... Over 2,300 individuals for this. And we met most recently last week to decide, did we get a mandate to stop our work or should we continue to look into this further? And what we determined was, there's enough interest there to look into this a little bit further. People did express comments such as, "It's hard to know whether we want a later start time because I need to know how it's going to impact my family," which is completely understandable because people's schedules being as busy and tightly scheduled as they are. So what we've committed to do as a start team, we'll resume our work in the fall. And we're really going to get out... Our intention initially is to get out some education around why you even consider this opportunity. Plus, we're going to start to share with them some potential scenarios that we've learned in talking to about eight or 10 other districts who have gone this route. We've gotten lots of information. People called them and interviewed them. So we've got some guidance to help us as we move forward. So we're going to continue our work. I will keep you updated as we said to the parents, staff, and students that if anything changes, it would not be until at least the 1920 school year. And obviously, it would require your approval as time changes and things. So I anticipate that probably in the late fall or early winter, we'll have a presentation that we'll do, have it put on local cable. And that way, people can watch it to learn more about what we're doing. And thanks to the people in the start time team who have committed to continuing that work. We do have a couple of openings. Some people's schedules who would originally want it to be on, it just hasn't worked out. So we have some opportunity for some. So if there's other people out there, please email us. We'd be welcome, some more members.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you. Wasn't there a concern with sports in the later part of the year?
Yeah, so through the chair, the concerns, you know... So we asked the students in particular, "What would you see?" And looked at our... We surveyed students who would be going into grades six through 12 and asked them, "What would be their ideal start and end time?" And we told them, "It needs to be six and a half hours." That was the parental...
Hope their math is good.
Right. Very large number of students said, you know, 8 to 2:30, 8:15 to, you know, 2:45, somewhere in there. Some even a little bit later. But some students' concerns were absolutely, you know, "How's it going to impact sports?" And also, "I have an after-school job. How is it going to impact that?" So we also had done a Likert scale and asked them to rate, you know, "Are you completely opposed to this idea? Are you strongly in favor? Or you're somewhere in between? You need more information before you decide." So they fell more closely in that, "I need more information before I decide." There were always some who felt strongly at either end of it. But what we had said as a committee, as a team, when we spoke, excuse me, to the other districts, we believe there's a way for us to do it that will have a very minimal impact on elementary but allow some relief to the kids at the high school level and not impact their sports and after-school activities and things. So that's the ideal goal. Other districts have been able to do that. So that's what we're hoping to have happen. Because what we don't want to do is shift a problem, you know, and now have our elementary school kids getting up, you know, at 6:30 in the morning that our high school kids do. So we don't think that makes sense either. So we've got lots more to investigate. But talking to those other districts, each of us took a district and interviewed them and then reported that was extremely helpful because they've gone through the process.
Good.
I guess one of my concerns would be, in the fall and winter, it gets dark really early. It gets cold, you know, early. So how would that also affect kids getting home? You know, and stuff like that.
No, through the chair, those are all, you know, great points. And even, you know, we have some high school students now who are outside waiting for bus, depending on some of our longer routes, shortly after 6 o'clock in the morning.
Oh, jeez.
And it's so, you know, for all of those reasons.
It's crazy.
It is, you know, for dark.
Yeah.
So we think that there is the potential to provide some relief in that regard. So we're going to continue to do it. We'll certainly bring back information. But it was a tremendous outpouring of information to get over 2,300 people to respond. 2,300 surveys completed. Because it could have been, and we said, if you're a staff member, complete it from your staff member perspective. But if you're also a parent, you may have a different perspective. So complete that too. So there could have been some duplication. It was a large turnout for a survey, particularly sent out in June.
And if I could, one of the concerns I've seen about other communities that were doing it is some families use their older children to babysit the younger ones. And if you reverse it and the younger ones are home first, there's no one to watch them.
Right.
So that's a concern.
That was shared through the chair. That was shared as well from other communities. So those are all things that the team is committed to be cognizant of. And honestly, we anticipate that an additional survey would eventually go out to people after they have more information. So this is what it might look like. Because as we said, we really care about what Auburn wants to do for Auburn kids. Not whatever other community is doing and things. So that was the reason for the survey. But what we gleaned from it is, there's enough interest in going forward that we should at least investigate it further and report back.
It's funny, if I was still teaching, I'd be awful starting later.
Really, Gil? It's a shocker.
It's funny because when I first started, sixth grade here, it was 9 o'clock in the morning. And then they kept backing it up. Then it was 8:30. Then I got to the middle school over at Swanson. And then it was 8:20. And then I had to be there before 8 o'clock. And I'm like... You know, it just wasn't coinciding with my hours.
Now the 7:00 p.m. is a struggle sometimes.
Well, that's because I do a million things before I get here, but...
You now move on. Oh, we have one more.
Can I just ask one more question? Only from a wellness standpoint. Are they taking into account all the studies that link to sleep deprivation of teenagers? That links with depression?
So through the chair, absolutely. And we have research around that to share. And one of the troubling questions and we had asked to the students was to try and get an understanding of how many hours they sleep now. And that if it was to be a later start time, would you go to bed earlier? Would you stay up later? Or would you stay alone? And there was a fair number of them, quite honestly, who would just stay up later. So I think that tells us there's educational work to be done on the student level about the need for getting enough sleep, you know. And we talked with... We have a few students who were appointed on it. And we have one student who has been at every meeting. And to try and understand, you know, the reasons for that and screen time certainly is one of those. But so we're going to try to attack it on that level too, to help kids understand that these issues go hand in hand, you know, so...
And how would it affect transportation? You said that elementary school wouldn't be affected much? Would there have to be additional busing or...?
Well, so that was one of the parameters that we had set is, the goal would be to go into this without having additional costs. So we have gotten some information. We've got numbers. I haven't shared them fully with the team in terms of how many students ride on each bus. Could we, right now, have three tiers? Could we potentially look at two tiers of busing? I don't know. But we actually have a fairly large gap between when the middle school students are dropped off and when the elementary students. So there might even be some collapsing of that that could happen. So lots still on the table, yes.
I know the research suggests doing it. I mean, it's social-emotional. It's great for older kids.
It is, it is.
As long as they go to bed at night.
Through the chair, maybe we'll see some good stuff on the homework.
All right. We now move on to unfinished business.
So I just wanted to update you that Dr. Lozay, Mrs. Vidi, and I did meet with Ms. McGreal-Maha. She came in and gave us some additional information. We did express to her that we certainly are interested in looking through this. She's given us some contact information. But as I relayed back to her, the end of the year has been so very hectic that we really have not had the time to give it its due diligence. So I will be back in touch with her when we're able to do that and when we have more information to share with you. So just wanted to give you an update. We did have a conference call with MSBA today. We were hoping that we would be on the August board meeting for the final closeout of the middle school project. But it seems from their discussion that they are backed up with lots of projects seeking to close. So our new goal is to close on the October board meeting. Mr. Kazanovich and Town Manager Jacobson were on the call as well as Mrs. Worsbiki, myself, and other district representatives. So all of our paperwork is in. We're just waiting for their audit, which will then trigger this next meeting. So we're moving forward.
Did we have to borrow money because of that?
So there was...
There was something about that.
There was. So through the chair, MSBA will reimburse up to 95% of the project. And that's where we're at, until the final audit is completed. And that's one of their regulations. So because the final audit is delayed because they're backed up, there's a short-term borrowing that needed to take place. So that will get paid as soon as these monies come in. So there's ample money coming back from MSBA. It's just that gap in timing.
So are we having to pay a penalty to borrow or...?
There will be an interest charge to do it.
An interest charge, yeah.
Yes, there will be. But I don't believe it's a penalty. But there'll be an interest charge to do it. And unfortunately, the timing just didn't work out. All of the paperwork has been in well before May. And part of this was the ongoing H-back issues that we were having that we would not sign off on the building until those were rectified. So in the end, it's the right thing for the community to have it for a building for longevity and such.
Sure, absolutely. All right, thank you for that.
Okay. We now move on to new business.
So in terms of... I did have conversations with the middle school and high school administration and looked at their projected enrollments for next year based on students currently in district. And there will be less students at each school. So in discussions around that, it is my recommendation, and with the approval of the administration at secondary, to increase our school choice numbers very slightly, adding five school choice slots at the middle school and three at the high school. As I think I've shared with you before, we have ample people who had submitted applications that are on waiting lists, so feeling there would not be an issue. And both administrations feel comfortable and confident at adding these students, all of whom I will tell you I've done studies and presented it in the past, have been some true value adds to our school community.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve an additional five school choice slots at Auburn Middle School and three at Auburn High School.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
I just have a question. So if a parent isn't already in the lottery and on the waiting list, is it dead in the water for them or is there something they can do?
The issue that would be if, so we'd have to go through the waiting list that we have, but oftentimes at this time of year, people have already taken other choices. What we find is when people apply for school choice, they are more interested in leaving, they're excited at the thought of coming to Auburn, but they're often interested in leaving their home district for a particular reason. So they'll often put school choice applications in multiple districts.
Oh, I see.
It is possible that they may have already accepted a slot elsewhere. So there are the possibilities that others could be, but we'll certainly make an announcement around that. But I'm hopeful we'll be able to take care of everything that's needed.
Oh, good. That's it? No other comments? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's a vote.
The early registration is out now for the November 2018 MASs/MASC conference. So if you could complete those, if it is your intention to go, and just be sure to complete the section regarding meals, and I will send you an email at least as a reminder of what we did last year that I think may have worked out well in terms of that. And you can get that back to Mrs. Zotner. And these are due prior to July 15th, correct?
My last day before my vacation is the 11th.
Okay. So if we can get them back before July 11th, Mrs. Zotner, or I will send you an email tomorrow as a reminder with just some suggestions on what you might want to consider for meals. And then finally, under new business, wanted to let you know that Town Manager Jacobson, myself, Chief Lucas, and Chief Coleman have been asked to be on WTAG tomorrow from 4:00 to 5:00 PM and will be there answering some questions. There is a guest host that will be taking over for Jordan tomorrow. So we've all agreed that we have faces for radio, so hopefully we...
Couple of them maybe, but not you.
Oh.
Well, I've been known to call on that show, so.
I didn't, I didn't know.
Disguise my voice.
I didn't know it was still in existence, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I haven't heard that show in years.
My kids can't stand that I listen every day. All right. And now we move on to teaching and learning.
So Dr. Lozay wanted me to share the update regarding the homework team. As you know, she shared before that, so this team was established back in March. It was comprised of teachers across the grade levels, parent representatives at each level, and administrators. And the group met over about a seven-week period, five times, and the goal being to draft handbook language as well as update the school committee policy. So to inform their work, the committee read and discussed research, they created parent, teacher, and student surveys, and they reviewed area districts' guidelines and policies. And in the end, all of the school's handbooks have been tweaked a bit and taking from those changes was an updated draft policy in your packet for first reading tonight. So as Dr. Lozay said, she wanted me to be sure to pass along thanks, the committee was extremely invested in their work and she thanks them for their willingness to give of their time and expertise. So that will come, the policy itself, a little bit later in the meeting.
Okay. We now move on to business and financial.
So in your packet for Mrs. Worzviki is a year-to-date budget report. We meet literally daily, just about, on this to go over things, to make sure that we are in good shape. And the very exciting news that I shared with you last time, that we had $100,000 to put into the special ed stabilization account, we have really been pinching our pennies to try and put money into there. And you'll see in the omnibus transfers, we're hoping, we have now set aside for a total of $300,000 to put into that account.
Excellent.
So it is a great way, and to give all of us on the committee and in the community some great relief and comfort knowing that that money is there if an unexpected or unanticipated special education costs arise. So very happy to have received your support and that of the special stabilization team too. So thank you. The omnibus transfers in your packet, as I said, do include that information. It shows as $175,000, but you had seen $125,000 last time. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions regarding that bid?
And then finally, Mrs. Janice King, our food services director, notified Mrs. Worzviki. Each year we go out to bid, the goal being to find the best possible prices to keep our costs and charges low. So as included in the memo from Mrs. King, it is her recommendation that you approve the Auburn School Committee, that you approve the bids that are rewarded for grocery and foods, to Thurston Foods, milk and dairy to New England Ice Cream, paper and disposables to Central Paper, and bread and bakery to Duve Distributors. So it is my recommendation that you do that, please.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the MSBG food and non-food bids listed in our packet for the 2018-2019 school year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just thanks to her, she is amazing. Does a great job at her. I mean, that's a tough job to do.
Through the chair, I will pass it over. She really does. She really does.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's a vote.
And then in terms of the Packet Card Accelerator Repair Program, we are, the final request for reimbursement has been submitted. We are in the final audit stage there. Obviously, a much smaller project in scale and cost from the middle school project. So we do anticipate closing that out very soon and we'll let you know. But very, very pleased with the work and quality all the way around, and that certainly came from Mr. Vicky as well.
Great.
And then the warrant payables, as you know, Mrs. Holloway was appointed by you to come in and sign, and there are copies of two warrants that she signed on the 14th of June.
Thank you. Can we now move on to policies?
So the first one is the Auburn Public Schools website accessibility policy that you approved on first reading back in early June. It is my recommendation that you approve it on second reading. This is really to ensure that the, any individual can access our website, as with any others.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve policy IJNDCA Auburn Public School District School Website Accessibility Policy on second reading.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's a vote.
The next one in your packet is the meal charge policy. And this was actually modeled completely after the MASc-recommended one. It is only slightly different than the one that was in place. It just ensures that there are clear guidelines on how we will handle meal charges for families and students. So it is my recommendation that you approve that.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve the new meal charge policy.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's a vote.
Through the chair, I actually just had, I apologize, I will still approve it, but I did just have a bunch of point of clarification.
Sure.
And it might not even need to be in the policy, but I know it's the standard practice that the cafeteria will still give kids food when, if they don't have funds available, correct?
Correct.
I would like to see that's kind of mandated. Not that I think that our cafeteria workers would not be able to contribute, but...
So through the chair, it does state that in there that we still continue to do so. And it outlines that the method of making sure that families are aware of it, the food service department makes phone calls, they send emails, Mrs. Worzviki assisted with that as well. So we, there are some challenges in collecting some funds, but students never go without a lunch.
Okay. And actually, I apologize, I was just reading through too quickly, but thank you for that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
And then finally is the homework guidelines policy. That starts off with a rationale, the reasons and what homework should be utilized for, and then actually breaks down by grade level or, or school level, what it is, that the expectations would be. And this again was with input by, with people, administrators, parents, and staff from across the school. So it is my recommendation that you approve on first reading.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the homework guidelines policy on first reading.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's a vote.
Thank you.
And we do need to go into executive session.
We do.
This evening. So I would entertain that motion.
I will make a motion per Mass General Law, Chapter 30, Section 21A2, to enter into executive session to conduct strategies for negotiations with union and non-union personnel in Section 21A3 to discuss strategy with respect to litigation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No.
No. Well, good.
Roll call vote.
Mrs. Corliss?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Spohby?
Yes. Good night, everyone.